7:00 PM. Now, calling the order of Swansea zoning board of adjustment for March 20th, 2023. I will ask Sarah to call our role and prepare to read our agenda.
Keith Tebow.
Here.
Brian Reddard.
Here.
Bill Hutwilk.
Here.
Ann Karasinski.
Here.
Lisa Thorne. Eric Calio.
Here.
Wayne Lecliter.
Here.
James Ward.
Here.
The agenda for the March 20th, 2023 ZBA is as follows. Review and approve the minutes of February 13th, 2023. The regional impact vote. Public hearing, ZBA 23-003, special exception application. High Grove MHP requests a special exception pursuant to Section 4, Articles A to M and B to D of the zoning ordinance to construct an accessory structure with a footprint larger than 1,000 square feet on property at Lat Lane. The subject property is shown at tax map 87. The lot is not on here. Lot 2, thank you.
Did you have to postpone the last meeting? Properly noticed?
No. It's properly noticed elsewhere. Lot 2, and located in the rural agricultural district and the residence district. Then, ZBA number 23-004, a variance application. Timothy and Kim Carrier request a variance pursuant to Section 5, Article B1 of the zoning ordinance for two-family dwelling use at 27 West Street. The subject property is located at tax map 57, Lot 6, in the business district. ZBA number 23-005, for a special exception, a variance and an additional special exception for Lesser's Four Seasons Services, has been postponed until April 17th. The applicant has requested a delay.
All of them?
Yes.
Okay.
All three applications for 23-005.
I was confused when I was reading through.
And then, other business, election of officers, ex parte communications, and other businesses may be required.
Let's see, we have some minutes to take care of. On the February 13th, it appears from my scratchings that myself, Brian, and Jim were here for that, and there were others who didn't get present, so that would have been Adam. Oh, Brian, I ain't here as well.
I was remote.
This is him who's remote.
At the last.
Here's him, okay. Well, that's good.
Emotionally accept this room.
Thank you, Brian.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ann, move and second to approve the minutes of February 13th, 2023, as presented. Any question on the motion?
Is Eric alone?
No. Yes, Eric Calio here. I'm alone in the room. Good evening.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Brian. Let's see. All those in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to see if approved. Election of officers. Oh, that's built up. Did he give us a nomination or two of the officers as we move forward if you can?
Is that going to be after or before?
No, we're going to take a motion that we nominate Brian as vice chair and Keith as chair. Thank you.
Second.
Second.
You have more than can do up.
Thank you. Any questions on the nomination? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
No, it's a nay.
Oh.
You agreed both times.
Would you like me to record that?
No.
Okay.
And what we've done at the request of one of our members is to, well, actually, before we get to the ex parte, and I think if I can jump in with the Fieldstone and Lesser announcement, just to understand what's happening. I believe there's a number of you here that are here with interest in what would have been the third, fourth, and fifth application for tonight, which is the Fieldstone Land Consultants on behalf of Lesser's Four Seasons Services. The applicant has asked for this to be postponed, so they can get together, I guess, a better application, or multiple day application, I'm not sure, but they've asked it to be postponed, so that won't be heard tonight at all, and we will be picking it up again in April.
On April 17th.
April 17th.
Thank you on the motion on that.
That would be good. Make a motion, remove applications, ZBA 23-05. There's a variance, special exception, and a second variance, special exception, to the April 17th.
Okay, second.
We have a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So, move and seconded to accept the request to delay the three lesser applications until our next regular scheduled meeting on April 17th. Any question on the motion?
Just, I think one of us alternates needs to be seated. It doesn't have to be either four of you.
Yeah, I think if we, I did do that when we get to a case.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. All those in favor of the motion? Any other questions on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So, if any of you are here for that application, and want to listen to the rest of the meeting and what we talk about, and the other cases that are coming up, that's fine, but certainly if you want to make the most of the rest of your evening, you can feel free to do that as well.
You have your time back.
That's right. That's the way to go.
I have a question. So, does that mean the third?
Could you just identify yourself?
Thank you.
The Thursday one on the 23rd for the site plan, did that post home too?
They've made the same request.
Okay.
So, it will still appear on the agenda, and a similar announcement will be made.
Okay, so it's not going to be until April?
Correct.
Okay.
Could we do the second meeting?
It will be the second meeting in April. So, that's the 27th, I believe, is the date.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
What I'd also like to do here, before the chair, is to move up our 7A ex parte communications up to the top of the heap here, and this is intended to be literally a discussion.
Can I interrupt?
You may.
Are we being filmed and recorded or broadcasted live? What's this guy doing here?
Yeah, he hasn't been to your meeting. This is Josh, who does this for the other boards as well.
Okay. All right. He was recording meetings, and then he, he was in the, under the phone, accessing the meeting and seeing what else. Okay. And it's broadcast where? Uh, correct, that, it's, um, it's, um, okay.
Way on 1301.
Um, I would, um, sure, they're actually running that on channel.
And the recording is posted on the title website after this?
Okay, yeah.
Keith, before you get into it, I'd ask you to move that to the front of the agenda, but since Lisa isn't here.
Okay.
Withdraw that request.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's get right to work.
Yeah, I think it makes more sense to have that as a full board.
I think that makes more sense.
Especially with.
Okay.
Just kind of like the Ken Show.
All right. So, what we'll do before we move into this first application is we will, I will seat Wayne for Lisa. And we have public hearing set up here, ZBA 23-003, special exception application. High Grove Mobile Home Park requests a special exception pursuant to Section 4, Articles A to M and B to D of the zoning ordinance to construction or access to construct an accessory structure with a footprint larger than 1,000 square feet on property at Lat Lane. The subject property shown at tax map 87, lot, and located, lot in?
Lot 2. Excuse me?
Yes, number 2.
Lot.
Lot 2. Okay. Located in the rural agricultural district and the residence district. I'd like to explain, we'll seat Wayne for Lisa, so seated for this, and myself, Brian, Bill, and? And Wayne.
Would you like a motion regarding regional?
Oh, I forgot, we jumped right over.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
That neither of the items that we do want.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I forgot number six, we turned around for the public hearings, which is our vote on regional impact, that has made a motion that none of the hearings that we're going to hear tonight would rise to the level of a region having regional impact, where we could get a second to that?
I'll second that.
Move and seconded that none of the hearings tonight would have rise to the level of a regional impact. Do you want to have any question on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, Bill. Okay. Now, the good stuff. Public hearing, ZBA number 23-003, a special exception application. High Grove Mobile Home Park requests a special exception pursuant to Section 4, Articles A to M and B to D of the zoning ordinance to construction accessory structure with a footprint larger than 1,000 square feet on property at Lat Lane. Subject is showing in tax map 2, Lot 2, and located in the rural agricultural district and the residence district. And we've sat our right, we've got Wayne sat for Lisa, and we'll take it from the applicant. Give us a sense of what you're looking to do. State your name.
I have maintenance and that, so I'm looking to put this building up, or maybe if I put our plow truck there, our mower is out of the weather, and that's all I'm using for the weather. But I've noticed some other surrounding problems, and I'm trying to.
O'Leary Brook of Six?
Yeah, they got, they're building, they're smaller and stuff like that. But it's this building, I think it's smaller than there. I think. So, guys, what are we going to do? There's going to be no maintenance shop in there, nothing like that. None of that, residents will be able to use it. All the shit that they need for, oh, the truck and the mower. It's all working good. I do have a picture of a building.
Sure. Take care of that.
We believe it's just this size or.
I'll take 1,200. If it's 30, I'll pay it.
Sarah, do they need to go to planning board?
It's all metal, double.
All metal?
Questions from the board?
I agree with that.
Wayne?
Four foot crosswalks. Yeah, we.
I'm not sure exactly where it is. It's hard for me to tell. I looked at the tax map and Lat Lane.
It's actually on Anthony Circle.
Yeah, that's why.
Lat Lane runs right across.
Yeah. It takes a right turn, right, and then Anthony Circle's right there? So, is it right at the junction of Lat Lane and Anthony Circle?
It's actually in Anthony Circle.
Okay.
I don't know if you ever been downing itself.
I have, sorry.
But it's more of a playground.
Okay.
It's not a big deal.
Since we've had these packets, have there been any, has anyone come forward? Anyone here to see me? Okay.
There haven't been any questions, comments?
No comments.
On the, on the packet.
Thank you. I didn't.
Sorry.
Thank you. Any questions more?
Just want to, is there a reason you choose not to do any maintenance in the garage?
No, no. We just want to keep it out of the weather. We're going to, we're going to grease them by mowers and grease our sander, they're like that. That's it.
I think he's talking about.
No truck repairs.
Change, change of the oil in the transition gear, stuff like that.
No.
None of that.
No, no, those are fair figures.
It's the Florida.
Yeah. And you will have electricity in the building?
Yeah, there'll be electricity, and we'll be heated.
Yeah.
And I think we talked about probably heating. After the, that's a bit.
Just, I see that this has nothing to do necessarily with the building, but we have 117 members of that cooperative right now. Do you know how many pads do you have? Like, how big could you get? You know, have any idea? You're about where you are now, you're full up? Good for you.
Yeah.
Good for you. And not that it matters to your application, I'm just curious, because I'm interested in these cooperatives. Did you work through the New Hampshire Community Loan Fund and create a registered own cooperative through them? Rock?
We asked through them.
Rock?
You have Rock, and we all have pilot.
So.
And we're the home loan.
Yep.
We have big work in the office, the people that want to buy it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so they can go through that.
They can all finance.
Oh, yeah, they have gone through there, too.
And they have, okay.
In fact, I'm on that whole commitment.
Good for you.
You know how that works.
Hopefully, it all works out for you, that, you know, that you control your own future. And these, the cooperative model is a good model for ownership of these, and I'm glad you guys are, and I'm also glad you.
We are looking at extending a little bit later.
Okay.
Because we don't want all that.
Yeah, I can see.
Yeah, I looked at all the acreage that you had back there, and, because that's, isn't it just above there, they were planning on putting all that big solar over there? So, it made me think about whether they could tap into some of that, or, like you said.
That's not a bad idea.
It was just a thought, because it's going to be right there.
James spoke about that, too.
You know, and, and I was just thinking about, like you said, with your expansion, you know, to keep the, you know.
Would you be replacing anything that's existing now, that you're storing things in? There's nothing all there, everything outside.
So, everything.
Well, that'll change it.
They're processing, doing on the.
Say that again, I'm sorry. Yep.
Yeah, we do everything.
Within the park.
Yeah, I do everything. Me and him.
Good for you.
Oh, and pilot, sand it, mow it. Come a long way. Many five years.
Protect their investment instead of doing what I do, which is cover my tractor with a tarp.
Yeah. Well, tarp's a good.
Yeah.
Tarp's work. Any other questions?
Can't believe the price. I was a son.
Yeah, yeah.
I was, I'm named by sick Phil, working in a building.
Yeah.
And she was going out.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions? This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience here that would like to ask a question about this particular application, feel free. Eric, are you good in the back there?
Yes, I'm, I'm good. No questions here.
All right. Thank you so much. Anything else you want to add before we move down with the questions? Before I close the public hearing, let's look at the application. Just curious, pavement around the outside of it, or is plenty of paving or bringing that up to it?
No, not paving it. We're saying, well, we're, we're not happy with that.
Okay. Okay.
I'm hoping to do right now. I see the four boats.
No doubt. Any other, any other questions? Hearing none? State a motion to close the hearing. Ah, before I get to that, though, I'm sorry. I jumped over Sarah's introduction normally for this project. Is there anything from your introduction here that you want to underscore for the board members or?
The only thing that I guess I would underscore, as you guys may have noticed, that this property is very large, and it is in two districts. That's why I was asking for a special exception from two sections of the zoning ordinance, but they both are the exact same language in both sections, because it wasn't really clear because of where the, the actual districts differ. I wasn't sure which, which district the garage would be in. I don't think it's in both, but I'm just trying to cover all of our bases here, and it is kind of deep within the park, so it's not going to be visible to any, any non-cooperative residents.
Right now, it's right in the dead center of it. Those, those, well. The best part about this, we're kidding around it, that we're going to make climbs put up there. This is something I want to stress, and I stress it to the floor. It was a great deal of stuff on the outside of the building, because I don't want kids getting hurt. So, I have a tractor outside, they climb on it.
Yeah.
There you are. That's why I was pushing that.
Yeah, sure. That makes sense. It protects the investment.
The building located, it's right in the center of the park.
That'll be a good spot. All right. Any other questions? Any discussion? We'll close the public hearing unofficially. Any questions among the board members? Any comments?
If it was 201 feet smaller, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
Something for next year. You got a point, you want to waste them, make the changes now.
Well, that, and that speaks to the fact that it's in two different districts, and a single property with a single focus. I wonder if that's in their best interest to be in two different districts, or if that's something you could consider.
Well, it's still 1,000 feet regardless of the district.
True, but she's talking about rezoning.
Talking about whether the property itself is.
Oh.
Its future.
Yeah, because they got a couple hundred acres or something. They're pretty big.
Quite big. Well, I'm, okay. I don't have any particular questions. I'm just interested in the fact that when they're doing what they can to protect their investment in this apartment, and, you know, not just protecting their kids, but, you know, preventing vandalism and things that can happen.
And just a little history here. We, your use is pretty, sounds pretty typical, like a pretty straightforward request, and we get a number of these, though, what people want, want in a, in a zone, want to put up a very large garage, and sometimes that works, meaning, you know, they have things they need to put, most of the time, they have things they want to put in it, just like you. And then other times, it's become sort of a nuisance in the neighborhood, because it become, maybe, such to open a business up, or, you know, things coming and going, or people get congregating, and it's a business now, not just a reuse. So, we take these, you know, we take these requests pretty seriously. Yours is, yours is more straightforward than most, but when you use of it is, you know, is certainly a secret. Yeah. But we just don't, you know, it can become gathering spots, too, you know, depending what.
Right. And I was, when I was reading through it, I was thinking what uses it could have in the future, and the one that sprung to mind, because I think this way, is that, oh, so all the people who, who have their homes could use, have storage, and, you know, they could have storage units inside the building, and I'm like, no, that's not going to work.
No, no.
We can't. Now, we, we can't anticipate the future use, but we try to have some sight of what might happen later.
Yeah. And I think we stated this, and it's maybe obvious, but I think it's important to say that it's also not going to be a function hall.
Right. They already have it. They have that, because of the thing.
Yeah. So, but that is something that will, again, it becomes a gathering spot as opposed to just a place to store equipment, and that's our concern that we have in previous approvals and other ones that we, so we ask more questions.
We got a gathering spot, we got a venue.
Yeah, you know, good for you. And I hope you gather there. That's, gathering is a good thing.
I did miss something.
No.
We'll close the whole?
I thought you closed.
I did. Oh, well, I'll reopen, we'll reopen the public hearing.
Maybe you know the answer. I had missed this, no impervious surfaces. I just, is this slab engraved with the building on that?
Would you be pouring a slab?
Yeah.
Yeah. He said that. Cross walls, too.
Yeah, they recommend that, the top of the line, add for this thing.
Oh, yeah.
And we're going by this fact.
Yeah, good. Makes sense, we have warranties and other things that go along with that.
Right, the warranty on the building.
All right, with the public hearing, we closed. Any question on the motion, or, I mean, on the case or the application, many not? All of us, questions? Questions? Do we agree that the proposed use is similar to one or more of the uses already authorized in the district and is in an appropriate location for such a use? Ann?
Yes, it's been demonstrated in testimony that there's other similar buildings with other, the same use, and it, and it's in a good location within the property.
Bill?
Yes, the, the use is allowable. It's a size worth ofating, and they gave a good example of viewpoint with a similar building, but larger, so, yes.
Wayne?
Yes, based on Ann and Bill's input and the input from the applicant.
Okay. Brian? Yes. I concur. Do we agree that such approval would not reduce the value of any property within the district, nor be otherwise injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood? Bill?
Yes. The, the neighborhood is the association, and they're clearly in favor of it, and it's not going to have any impact on adjoining aspects or parts of the district.
Wayne?
Yes, based on Bill's input.
Brian?
Yeah, there's no evidence to the contrary, and it sounds like the stuff that just kind of stored outside is jungle gyms for the kids now, so it'll actually improve the situation.
And so?
Yes.
I concur. Do we agree that there will be no nuisance or serious hazards to vehicles or pedestrians? Wayne?
Yes, based on what the applicant said, they're trying to protect the kids in the park and get their equipment out of the weather, and keep it away from the kids, so yes.
Okay. Brian? Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes, I agree with Wayne.
Do we agree that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use? Brian?
Based on the application and testimony, yes.
Ann? Bill?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
I concur. End of our questions? Entertain a motion on this application?
To make a motion to approve the applicant's application?
I'll second that.
Move and seconded to approve the application for special exception. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Bill? Welcome.
Nice presentation.
Y'all are doing great things there.
Hope the next real big thing you have to do is mowing grass. It's the box.
Right.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All righty. D R two Z B A number 23 dash 004, a variance application. Excuse me. Timothy and Kim Carrier request a variance pursuant to section five, article B, one of the zoning ordinance for a two-family dwelling use at 27 West Street. Subject property is located at tax map 57 lot six in the business district. Because my organization owns an abutting property to this particular property, I will need to bow out. Brian has indicated a willingness to take on the the role of chair. And I will allow him to seat, it looks like, a couple of alchemists, one for myself and one for Lisa. We'll seat, uh, James for Lisa. Wayne for Keith. And Eric, you're still with us, right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, you have anything for us? Tea it up?
Um, it's kind of another really basic application. Uh, they're here for variance because the zoning ordinance does not allow single-family or two-family dwellings in the business district unless they existed prior to, um, 2008 or 2022. Both, I can't remember the date, but prior to now, certainly.
It was last year.
It was last year's change. Um, so a year ago, this would have been allowed in their district, but more recent amendments have changed it, so it's not allowed. However, they're not building a new duplex. They're converting a single-family home into a two-family with no changes to the exterior. The property already has two driveways and is about an acre and a half. I don't believe I've missed anything. Oh, public sewer. Oh, it's two and a half. Sorry. Um, public sewer and public water are also used at the site.
So why would this? Just a question for you. Why would this be under V one?
Why would it be under V one as opposed to? Oh, because I thought it made sense to put it there because it's not, um, it's not an allowable use. So you wouldn't ask for a variance for it being disallowed.
Well, I guess I was wondering about V two.
V two are the special exceptions for the district. And it wouldn't be allowed as a special exception because it's not multifamily.
But that's what they're making it into.
Multifamily is three dwellings or more.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
But didn't didn't it change to five or more?
Well, the definition of multifamily is three or more. So in the district, the minimum multifamily is five. But this isn't a multifamily because a multifamily has to have at least three to be considered a multifamily.
All right, we'll open the public hearing. Timothy, let you go ahead and tell us what you want to do and what your plan is and walk us through it.
I mean, honestly, pretty straightforward. Just, uh, divide and retract, um, one family home into two. And, uh, everything good. That's that's really it. No exterior changes, like she mentioned. There's already a driveway, um, on the other side. So, I mean, you wouldn't really see or even notice it if you drove by, if you didn't know it happened. It would look the same today after it's finished afterwards, wouldn't it? Other than maybe two cars on the other driveway where I took off and saw the other driveway. So besides that, it's, you know, it's really good.
And it's going to be for family, I guess so?
Yes.
Yeah.
So this this isn't, this isn't an ADU.
Maybe.
An ADU where they're attaching. So we have this new, and you know this better than I do because you helped bring it under, uh, four. But ADU is an attached dwelling unit where people come in and they want to add on so they can put their mother-in-law attached to their house. So are you going to have people who are related to you living in the other part? Or is it going to be like renters?
Basically, I mean, the the short version of it is that there's one, really honestly, one wall and the whole house divides up. Where then I make a kitchen out of another area and one side and that's pretty much done. That's literally the scope of the work. Could be probably seven thousand dollars.
So so well, that's what I thought is basically when I was reading this that you already had that the property was.
A lot of the work, a lot of the work sort of in this direction that I've already done, truth be told, I had last year, I wouldn't know on that. It's changed. Didn't work my way. I guess I was a little wide.
Yeah.
That's okay. That's fine with it. So.
So do you so so you, as far as the house, because I looked at the drawings, so so it was originally like set up that way? It was designed from what you can tell?
When we bought the people we bought from, not necessarily, but it could have easily been converted and that was something my wife and I always wanted to work towards.
Right.
Never really got there.
Yeah, okay. So I guess the, is this turning it into basically like a condo where there's a?
Just two-family home.
Two-family home.
Yeah, separate entrances.
Okay.
Separate entrance, separate driveway.
Separate driveway, separate.
So it's not a, that's that's the problem.
No, the garage. You're still going to say, so my wife and I obviously still stay on one portion of that. And, you know, the only place you can clean the garage.
Right. So yet, that's why I couldn't see. It looked to me as though the other unit did not have a garage, you know, just on the driveway. Is that right?
There is a shed on the other side, so.
Can you give us your name and and your address so we can record?
That's as well.
Okay.
You call boring. It's a drive. It looks to me like there's a staircase in the back. Here. Let's see here. Okay, so this is this thing.
There's a staircase in the basement.
This goes to the basement.
Where is this staircase?
So then this staircase, this is one.
Because that's looking.
Upstairs. This is this one here. So the upstairs only goes to this section. And then the kitchen and dining room is vaulted ceilings. And this is the sunroom addition we did four or five years ago in the back. So, yes, this covers all of this right there.
Any other questions to the board?
Is is that the daycare?
Yeah, well, the head start.
The head start, yeah.
Yeah, head start. That's the daycare. Oh, so you're the, okay, so I did drive by this property this on my way here.
Oh, like, yeah, yeah.
And your neighbor's tree fell right across in the back. Did you see that? The tree right across the fence?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah.
A few branches.
So it's a sizable, it's a sizable lot, so.
Okay. Like if you said yes, and she's like, yes, a cross-start yard.
Cross-start yard.
Anybody else? Questions? Go.
To follow up on what Anne led in with, did you consider doing this as an accessory dwelling unit as opposed to creating a two-family?
Not that I would get by accessory.
The what she referred to the acronym ADU is accessory dwelling unit. And you're permitted under the ordinance, I would never put straight up or by special exception, to have an accessory dwelling. So you, as a property owner, I want you have, the the goal, as she mentioned, was was in law, but obviously it's a little more broad than what was perhaps intended. But it accomplishes the goal of increasing the housing stock. Reason I'm asking if you consider that is that since the ordinance just changed, it's difficult for me to grant a variance. Uh, the the benefit I think Sarah led into, which is that you're pre-existing, but at the same time, the planning board took that into consideration when they crafted the language to modify the the ordinance. And the problem we have is today Sarah was yesterday somebody else. So we don't have a connection to what their dialogue was and what their reasoning was. But if you consider an ADU, I don't recall. Is that my right or?
Um, I believe ADU is by right and D A D U is special exception.
So you wouldn't even need to be.
D A D U is detached.
But he would have to build a separate structure.
Well, so my question, that's my question.
He could do exactly what he's doing as an attached accessory dwelling. It's included.
Okay, so I thought it had to be separate. Does it know?
No.
That's a D A D U.
D A, DADU.
Detached additional housing.
We don't have the issue that some people run into with something of a sort.
I have a question. What would be the difference?
I'm trying to understand that myself.
If you want two somewhere and suppose ADU, you want to rent out and go to the, you have to do that.
Right.
You would have.
You have to live in one of the dwellings.
So we would be able to do eventually because our whole building of property and all of the, I don't care.
Okay.
So 75 years under, that's a huge number, but that's our future.
Okay, so that would be the part. That's the part that would make it. Yeah.
But the benefit would be if you were to go the accessory dwelling unit today, then we don't know how legislation is going to change in five or 10 years. But but if you did worry about it later, you your argument could be that you're pre-existing. This is this has been rental housing. I think, I I think you'd have, at least for me, it would be an easier decision than tonight because you're pre-existing. If if this ordinance had changed five years ago and there were multiple people asking for the same thing, it'd be different if it just changed.
I know. And that's our issue, but we are literally surrounded by condos and apartments.
And and you need up the street is probably maybe I'd say six houses besides the condo development. And two of them are already duplexes. So I don't think it doesn't necessarily stand out as different. I mean, I understand where they want the district to move. I understand that, but certainly we need a different authority to assist all the structures.
So Sarah, can you give us a synopsis for them as well as for us to understand if we move forward as as it's written versus changing it to an ADU?
Well, for an ADU, they wouldn't need any relief from the VBA. So.
They could just go forth and build a wall and be done.
So I mean, I suppose they could potentially withdraw the application for the variance so that it doesn't have to be denied. I don't know if it's correct that that can be done during the public hearing. Does anybody else know? Bill says yes.
Well, before we vote on it, I don't know. It couldn't be withdrawn.
We could.
Okay.
If if.
Once we vote on it, then it's then it's approve or deny, right?
We can deny it without precedent, right?
Oh, no, they'd have to pull it without us making a decision.
And and I don't really want to confuse them, but I, you know, because I want them to understand and us to understand what's going on. But if 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 they went to add to the route without you know, in the in 10 years, they want to move to another house and and we caused that, like if they have a problem, I don't, I mean, I don't foresee that. I don't foresee that that would be an issue for them. I'm not, I don't have a problem voting on this either way. It it's just that, you know, it might be easier if they just did the ADU. That that didn't come up in your discussions with them or anybody?
I believe that was mostly a discussion with Mike Jasmine.
Yeah, sure. And he don't get activated when they leave.
Okay, so the way I understand it, sorry. The way the way I understand it now is we have a couple of options. One is you can withdraw the application as it's written and just go forth and do what you want to do as an ADU. And we don't have to hear the case, correct? The limitation on that would be down the road. If you want to rent out both apartments, you'd have to come for permission to do that, right? Because ADU means you have to live in one of them. So that would be a bridge to cross down the road if you choose to do that. The other option is to leave it as it is. And then it gets approved or denied, however the board moves forward. And then you potentially, if it gets approved, you wouldn't have to come back in front of us.
So is it continue out, five years now, we live in that community?
Yeah.
I think that's what, um, Bella suggested, and it sounds right to me as well. I think that would be.
Sounds like we're setting the groundwork for that ourselves based on this testimony.
Can I be a little obstructive here and just ask one more time? I just want to understand this because I'm reading in what Sarah presented for us here that, uh, it's section five, particle B, that's five, a one-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, or the manufactured housing dwelling established prior to the adoption of self-therapy, which is what this is, shall not shall be considered permitted use in the business district and shall not be subject to section, uh, 11, article A of the ordinance. Right? Now, what that section 11, article A says is what? I haven't gotten that far, but I was.
Um, that's about non-conforming usage, non-conforming structures. It's all about non-conformity.
Expanding non-conforming.
Right, so.
Which doesn't affect what we're talking about.
In other words, it's not a non-conforming use. It doesn't apply to the idea of having, um, a a different use. Be prior to this, the new ordinance, right? They could go to a duplex if they wanted to. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
I think the way that they're probably set up, yes.
Right. So it's not that it's not that this grandfather's that ability.
No.
That's why I'm just wondering because it's, you know, it's it's one-family dwelling, it's permitted use, but the the fact of converting it is no longer available to them.
Because it's business district and 11A doesn't apply to them, but it does to others. And Wayne's applied his finger a few times, sorry.
It's this finger though.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So so what's the difference between this applicant and the one we approved three meetings ago out here that went from a single family to a two-family?
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Was that in the residence district?
Aren't they in the business district?
They, I believe they were in the residential.
Residents. They're on the other side of Route 32. They're on the residence side.
But I can't remember.
Are those people here? No.
I think.
How is that different?
I'm trying to remember what district they are.
I think that was residential over here.
Yeah, but there's a business. Okay. I'm just saying, it's only half a mile away. And, okay. All right, well, I'm 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 good either way.
Yeah, I'm not saying I agree with how we've laid out our business and and residential. I mean, it's kind kind of a bomb that's thrown. People just draw the line on the map because it's their business, so it's different. That's the way I recall it. This one over here was residential.
Okay.
You know, I just derived it off that. I just was, uh.
Answer your question.
Yeah, residential business.
So we go back to the idea, if it's an ADU, they they don't have to apply. They can withdraw their application. And then five years from now, they can either get approval here or they would have to sell it if they were going to move out. They sold it. What happened if they sold it?
If the ADU follows the property.
So the owner, the new owner would have to live on purpose.
Unless they came and got permission to opt themselves out.
So are we making it worse if we say, okay, so third option? What if, what what if? What if we proceed with our test? And and don't approve it? And they still do the ADU if they want?
I'm going to get a question. How does that affect if I decide not to withdraw it? Or turns it down? Does that mean that like, is that other option just not on the table for us?
No, or he could do the ADU if he feels like it and then deal with it 10 years from now.
Well, I think what happens then is it would be motioned and it'll be a record in their, in the property file, right? That they had a denial.
Exactly.
And we we don't want them to come back and say, face a different board and have a denial in there.
Okay. It would have to be, um, unless the law changes substantially. Or even if the law changes a little bit, but the application would have to be substantially different to reapply for a variance for the same thing. However, um, as Bill stated, it's possible our ordinance will not disallow duplex in the business district some five or 10 years. It's it's hard to know. But if everything is the same as it is today and you reapplied for this variance and you had been denied, it could not pass.
That's nice to add to.
Yeah, you don't want to come back with the same thing. So I think from my point of view, it makes sense for you to draw it right now and then.
Yeah, so let me, uh, let me summarize again where we are and then you make the decision. There's no right or wrong. We can't, we're not trying to influence your decisions. We're just giving you the information. You're the property, right? So I'll run to the summary here again. Correct me if I go astray, okay? So option one is we move forward as you've written it. If it ends up in a denial, uh, then you could certainly just throw the wall off and go to the ADU route. But then you couldn't come back and ask for the same thing again because there's already denial on record. It's called the second bite at the apple. Your application would be have to be substantially different than it is written today for it to be reheard. Option two is you withdraw this application so there is no action on it, right? And then it's removed from the record. You do your ADU thing. And then down the road, you come to the board, come to Sarah, hopefully she'll be still here. And you come in and ask for a variance to make that from an ADU into a duplex situation. Option three is, uh, we just drop the whole thing. Forget all about it.
So with that in mind, if they if they withdraw their application, it's because I know we we started charging. So, with that in mind, if they, if they withdraw their application, it's, because I know we, we started charging for that, but I don't remember when that happened, because, so can they have that money back? If we, if they don't, if they aren't, if we aren't voting on it, I mean, is that, or am I just being cheap? Sorry.
We can't, we can't, we can't do it.
Yeah, but they still have to go through the application process.
Yeah, but is that their fault, or is it Mike Jasmine's?
No, no, I, I think, I think that we, our discussion has led to them reconsidering their options, but before that, they had to pay the money to find that out, so.
Okay.
I think probably it's Sarah's time and our time and missing that, I think it's probably, again, good feedback.
Do you guys want to take some time to talk about it, you're, between yourselves?
Okay, and we don't want to influence your decision, make sure you're doing what you want to do, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Then this does allow you, if you change your mind, to come back. Or you could come back a month later.
Yeah.
If you want to change your mind.
Do you want to change your mind?
I'd recommend for your budget to wait a little bit longer because their decision and process will likely be unchanged in a month.
Who's decision?
I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I'm just saying.
No new information will come to light?
You do know the Swansea, right? Okay, so, do we have a motion on, on that? Do we have to take a motion on that? We don't have to? Okay, so, your, your application then, as far as we're concerned, is officially withdrawn. So, we're not going to hear anything, we're not going to make a decision, you can go forth and build your wall, and just be clear that if you have any questions, you know, contact Sarah afterwards, and, or, or Mike, yeah, Mike Jasmine. But there should be no issue for you to just make it an ADU at this point, as long as you're living in one of them. And when that goes to change, contact her and Mike and jump through the hoops. Make sense? Perfect. Perfect, have a good night.
Thank you.
Take care.
Should you close the public hearing?
Oh, uh, make a motion to close the hearing, public hearing, you did it, anybody?
Close it, close it.
Okay.
My, you met him, it's consent?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have to vote on that?
Generally, not to close it, yeah.
Okay, public hearing's closed, have a good day, bye.
You're done with the court.
And as we are going to, well, this is okay, I'll take care of it, thank you, Brian, since we were going to, we're going to punt the ex parte conversation, so we got our...
Okay.
New folks, I think we put everything into adjournment.
Wait, wait.
Oh, wait, 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 we got more than a present.
Stop for us.
We got presents, big checks.
I don't want to get up.
Big checks, because they have, oh.
No.
Big check.
Did you want to have that annual vote, or do you want to wait?
We can wait.
Look at this.
Do you want the old ones?
No?
I'm just going to say, no, I don't want them. You guys might want to keep them for your own referencing purposes until every application that we have right now...
Has cycled through.
Has cycled all the way through.
We should recycle these, because this paper, we make a lot of money off this paper.
That's true.
Yeah, well, we're like, all that.
Are we still recording?
Yeah.
We have not returned. We have not. Thank you. Again, since we're going to move the ex parte conversation forward, we have no more business to tend to, we...
Now, make a motion that we...
Now, before we do that, before we do that, Wayne brought up a good point, it was in the back of my head, but I wasn't, just wasn't right about it.
What's that, Wayne? All right, just, there's a bunch of restrictions for AADU, I just hope we didn't leave, you know, less than 1,000 square feet, there's got to be a door in between. I hope they just don't think they can go and do it without talking to Mike Jasmine. Is that, am I wrong?
Did they leave?
You're not necessarily wrong, I don't know the other information on their application. The square footage isn't pointed all the way out, because it wasn't necessary to know the square footage for it to be a duplex.
There, it's roughly 15 hundred square feet. Total, or total?
No, the total houses.
If you take out the, the basement and the front porch, I would think, yeah.
Oh, so they're going to be... A thousand square feet.
Yeah.
That was going to be my third, my third question, and I didn't want to say it...
It should be fire code.
Oh, wait till we're done. Well, I've just had a question, and I don't know if it's bringing up now or after the meeting, but if they went ahead with their application, could they do a detached, a DADU later, if they had an elderly parent? Like, let's say they put in a garage and wanted to put a DADU as part of that. If they do an ADU now, they can't do a DADU later?
But they'll have a CADU at the time, because the CADUs are coming down from Concord.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, never mind. I just...
Yes.
I mean, can you have a attached dwelling unit?
And then, you know, because...
I don't believe we can have both right now.
Have DADU.
Yeah, we can't have two, eh?
We have DADU and DADU.
I believe it specifies one, but if they had a duplex, they could then potentially request a DADU.
Okay.
As long as it's a duplex, because a duplex is not an ADU.
Right. But I'm not, I would have to read through to...
Okay, we can call, you can call them tomorrow and tell them we have to talk, yeah. Did we make a motion to adjourn?
No.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm, I'm just wondering, based on what y'all just asked, even though the public hearing was closed, it, it would be procedurally proper to give them a continuance for a month? Just from the standpoint that, yes, they withdrew, but it would keep, there's nobody here other than Josh, it would keep the opportunity open that if they met with Mike Jasmine, and he said, oh, you got to do A, B, C, and D, and they said, well, geez, yeah.
I would second that motion.
I don't, I don't know.
We'll go ahead and continue them for...
Still with that emotion?
Yeah.
You were making?
I'm asking for...
It's a good question, we should do it.
Would it be fair to the applicant to do that?
Yeah, make them come back.
No, no.
We're leaving it open, so that if it's necessary, they can without any additional expense.
Right.
Yes.
So, do we have, we have to have a motion on that, huh?
We just did.
Well, we have... But Sarah's got it, she's...
We got it, oh, perfect. So, all in favor?
I...
Huh?
Anthony did.
Oh, she did. Oh, gosh, she did.
Yeah, and I'll let them know. I'll, I'll send the correspondence tomorrow.
Tell them it's Michael.
Well, no, just tell them that they should check with Mike Jasmine before they give up on this idea.
No, it's the right protection, that's a really good idea.
It's here, yeah.
And then, if they don't need it...
Then they don't need it.
Then they don't need it, and then it just, then it just closes next month anyway, right? Because we want to continue to...
Yep.
Sounds good. Look forward to that.
That's why they pay on the big bucks.
Yeah, we're going to take that motion, right? Aren't we keep double our pay?
Yes, every year we've been doing that.
We've been doing...
You know, and we're, we're getting, getting somewhere with that.
It just started as a dollar. What would it be 25 years later? They're standing on the chessboard, right?
Do we have a motion to adjourn? We do, yeah?
Uh, yes.
Second?
Do you have a second?
I'll vote in favor.
All right.
All right, close. All right.